All right. We will call this meeting to order at 7:16. To people that are on the YouTube channel, we're sorry that there's only audio at this point. The Google meets link will be coming up momentarily if it's not already there. If you'd like to join the meeting that way, otherwise you can always review it. The recording will still be happening with video and audio. So your choice at this point, but we will get started. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda or any changes to that? Maria, is that a motion to? Okay. Is there a second? Thank you, Len. Is there any conversation on the or discussion on the agenda or additions, changes? Seeing no hands. I will call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Bruce, I don't see your picture. Did you vote yes? Okay, well, we have enough people to pass it, so we will keep moving. Approval of the minutes from 4:07, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those? Thank you, Maria. A second? Thank you, Len. Are there any changes or amendments to the or corrections to the minutes? Seeing nobody, I will call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. Approve the 4:07 minutes. Okay, any nays? Abstentions? No. Okay, thank you. The minutes of 4:21. Motion, please, to approve. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Len. Are there any corrections? Nope.
Adrian, I have one. And actually, this is on the agenda as correction to executive session. I'd like the board's direction on how you think this should be handled. I made a mistake in that April 21st meeting. You may recall that you went into executive session to meet with the school district's attorney for confidential attorney-client communication. And Adrian, before you went into that session, you asked me if we needed a finding of premature public knowledge, and my response was no, when in fact I misread my cheat sheet, and the answer to that should have been yes. So ideally, you should have found premature public knowledge before voting on the executive session. The good news is, executive session, you don't take any action. But I did want to acknowledge that. I don't know if that should be recorded in the April 21st minutes, or if that would be better recorded in tonight's minutes, but I wanted to get that on the table.
Well, it's in tonight's minutes, and you've corrected the 4:21 minute, so we're good.
It's Ann.
Yes?
Hi, it's Ann. I have a correction that I need to make.
Okay.
Under the finance section, I didn't put the second set of pay orders in the minutes, so I'm going to add them. Those are the set, that's the set four-line items totaling $71,366.27, so I'll add those back in.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Anything else? Andrea, you have your hand up?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Okay, if nobody else has anything, I will call the question or all in favor of the amendments as corrected. Okay, thank you very much. Any noes? Nope. Any abstentions? Not sure if I saw everybody, that's why I'm asking. Okay, we will go to public input and announcements. I know we have a few people with for public input. Dave, if you'd like to announce who they are, and we will give them their three minutes.
Yes.
If you could make it shorter, that would be lovely, because we're starting so late. But if not...
We have Adrian, Christine Billings by phone. Ken Fredette is with us by video, and then Gail Gillum by video. I think Christine Billings may have just joined us by phone just this moment, so I just want to ask if that's Christine there, and if so, then you're good to go with Christine.
Okay. And I would like to remind everybody to please announce your name and your and the town that you're from, and for board members to announce your name, because we probably still have people just listening. So go ahead, Christine. Christine? Dave, you see if she's on?
Hello?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can. You have your three minutes.
Okay. Hi, thank you. I just wanted to say that I really see that there's an us-versus-them feeling between the board and the public that really needs to get rectified in order for there to be any positive movement and gains in the district. And I really feel like these issues cannot be hashed out within executive session or private barbecue, as was suggested at the last meeting. Because with them is the public. And it just feels like there's a lot of mounting frustrations and on these forced apologies and, you know. You know, I got the letter, and the board stated there was a discussion piece for voting on the new chair. Upon review of the meeting, there was only just the nomination and a voting process. In October 2018, I know I'm not allowed to bring up old stuff, but it's to show how things have been progressing and where the public stands. The public was made aware of Mr. Yance's recording, and it was published by The Herald, and it was atrocious. And the public was never made aware of how it was rectified. All we know is that he said he didn't apologize for his behavior, but he was sad that the or sorry that the recording was leaked to the press. And then Adrian, with all due respect, you expressed that you felt Jesse was really disrespectful in the last public comment, but you know, his language and frustration is a direct result of him coming to the table so many times. And during Jesse's comment, you interrupted him multiple times, and then you're supported afterward by your board members who understand there's a frustration on your part. So I really, really feel like this stuff really needs to get hashed out, so everybody realizes we all want what's best. And then I'm very concerned, you know, our school's standing. You know, my husband and I went there, I know it was years and years ago, but, you know, more people went to Mill River over Rutland Town or out of over Rutland High School, out of Rutland Town, my husband being one of them. It was one of the highest-ranking schools. And you guys, what I heard before in past meetings was that scores don't matter. Well, I challenge that. I say the scores matter, the ranking matters, and the sports, and the theater, and the arts, and the special education, and all our students, and our community matters. And, you know, I'd like to know, I'd like to know if Mr. Yance has reached out to other districts that are outperforming us for ideas. And again, I really would just like to see the board vote on this, to get it on an agenda, and start talking about these topics openly in front of everybody. And I also want to humbly say that I really applaud Coral Stone for requesting the counselor position and basically supporting students' individual needs in this very crucial time. And we commend her for admitting...
You're running a good time.
Yep. Don't worry, this is an accolade. We commend her for admitting that she was not able to provide the services, because she didn't have the necessary, the proper necessary staff. So thank you, Coral. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Ken?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Ken Fredette from Wallingford. I'd like to speak a bit tonight about Vermont Open Meeting Law, because I know y'all just can't get enough of that. We've heard a lot lately about obligations of the board, but I'd like to look at rules for the public. 1 BSA 312-H deals with public input at meetings, as does 16 BSA 554-B, which pretty much mirrors 312-H. For newer board members and perhaps for people watching the meeting, all of Title 16 is specific to education. If you're looking at Title 16, you're looking at education law. Title 1 is more broad brush, dealing with school boards, select boards, committees, any public body that is subject to open meeting law. Some people seem to be unaware, or perhaps have lost sight of the fact, that the opportunity to provide opinions at a meeting of any public body is really intended to let people weigh in on matters to be discussed by that body during that particular meeting. 312-H actually says, quote, "on matters to be considered by the public body during the meeting, as long as order is maintained." So providing for the opportunity for public input does not mean it's a free-for-all to vent about anything sticking in one's craw. Of course, there will be some of that from time to time, but it must be civil. There have been instances in the recent past where a gavel would have been totally appropriate to warn the speaker to stay within bounds of propriety, but that's problematic with remote meetings. When you have a board retreat, perhaps you could discuss how to make a Google gavel. And on that, I found the discussion at the end of your last meeting very promising. I think a retreat is a great idea. It is not hiding anything from the public. It's a valuable tool for boards. And I wish you, all of you, the best for collaborative and productive meetings, even when issues are divisive. But I am now compelled to point out that everything I've just said is technically in violation of 312 and 554, so I have to call myself out of order and leave the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ken. And who was the third person? Gail?
We have Gail Gillum with us by video. And also, before Gail begins, Adrian, Brian informed me that the YouTube video kicked on unexpectedly, so at the moment, we're also on YouTube with video, but there's no guarantee that that holds up for too long. So Gail is next.
Wonderful. Okay, Gail, you have the floor for three minutes. Gail?
I'm just not sure if Gail can hear us or not.
Perhaps. Okay, well, if she unfreezes and can come back, we'll...
Okay, I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry, too many screens. Oh my God, you guys.
Okay.
All right. So kind of following up, I guess, on what Ken was saying, maybe, the guidelines that Ann, I emailed Ann this afternoon, and I didn't get a reply back. She probably couldn't find the answer to my question, nor could I after 45...
Gail, can I interrupt you for just a sec? Ann emailed me, and I'm sorry, I was shopping this afternoon. The guidelines that we have are at the bottom of the agenda.
No, 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 I know, but you say pertaining to Robert's rules. So are those guidelines from Robert's rules, or are those your guidelines from the board?
To tell you the answer, because I did not write them. They've been on the agenda for quite a while. I believe they were part of, I'm not really sure.
That's my question. And you know, when, when the public comes to you to speak, two minutes is really a short time. Number one, they're nervous, and number two, they try to, you know, figure out what the heck's going on. It's intimidating sometimes, because there's no back and forth. And so in our rules at Mill River, it says that the school board is very anxious to hear from the parents and the students, but when you come to a school board meeting, you don't, you do not feel that way. You feel like it's just a one-way street. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So the two-minute time limit seems to be a little short, and the other thing is, if there's more than one person that has the same concern, complaint, adulation, whatever, no one else can speak on the same topic. So how do you gauge, how do you gauge the temperature of the town if you're not hearing from everyone? So that's what I had to say tonight. I appreciate it. And I do remember the night of the flags, that you guys had all kinds of people speaking on the flag issue. I mean, one after the other, from even out of town, from even up north. So I mean, what's fair for one is fair for all, right? So that's it for me tonight, and thank you very much for my little technical issue in the beginning.
Thank you, Gail. Okay. Does anybody have any announcements to make? Nope. Okay. Principal updates. Who would like to go first? Fred, I have been terrible about not letting you go first, so how about you?
Well, I very much appreciate that, Adrian. Thank you. Fred Velastro speaking in behalf of Clarendon Elementary School. We are testing again this week. It's math three through six, so the kids are doing a really good job of taking their time and putting some energy into that. Social and emotional support has been a hot topic for us, and we're putting our heads together. We have a few kids that are kind of struggling, and we're looking at what we can do more and better this year, but also how we can start off next year, you know, supporting all kids and getting to know them a lot better. And we are thanking our entire staff this year, or this week, as it is Staff Appreciation Week. PTO, we thank them, they're bringing a luncheon in for our entire staff tomorrow. We've had some parents reach out. We're getting discounts on the food. We've had a parent with a food truck offer breakfast with coffee and muffins and other goodies here today, so the staff is filling themselves up with some goodies over the week, and just wanted to say thank you to all of them, because they do a wonderful job.
Thanks, Fred. Jody? Are you here?
I am. Good evening.
Hi. Oh, hi. There you are on my screen.
Here I am. So yeah, things are going great up at the Mountain School. Similarly to Fred, we have been plugging away at our S-Back tests. Our kiddos in grades three through six are taking the test and having some fun theme days to make those assessment days extra special. We have been working on Green Up this week, including a really fun project. We've gotten a huge load of new wood chips for the pre-K playground, and everybody grades six down to PK has enjoyed grabbing buckets full of wood chips and helping Ms. Terry, our very valued custodian, scatter those, so that's been a fun thing to do with the kids. Our PTO is currently working on planning for a field day. This year, we are going to have field day, but the classes are not going to mix as they normally would, and so we're setting up COVID-safe outdoor fun activities for June and getting ready for that. And like Fred, we are celebrating teacher appreciation. I want to thank the PTO for the amazing make-your-own-gift basket station they set, they set up for us. It was really appreciated, and just say how appreciative I am of the Shrewsbury Mountain School staff. Every single member of our school works so hard and advocates so well for kids, and they are, are a big part of what makes our school so special, the community, the kids, and that staff that just all care so much. That's what I got. Have a good night, unless there's any questions, sorry.
Yeah. I don't see any. Thank you, Jody. Maureen?
Hi. I'm here.
How's Timlin?
Timlin is doing great. We just installed four picnic tables to create an outdoor classroom. We are, like all the other elementary schools, completing our math S-Back. We, I think we have one kid that is doing a makeup test. We are, we, this week we had, or last week, we had Kathryn Patterson as a virtual author visit, and the kids just were thrilled. That was one, it's one of their favorite authors. And then as the last snow melted, our snowshoes arrived. So they'll be, we'll be ready to go next year. But it's, all in all, it's been a quiet two weeks, so I'm going to pass it on to Dan.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Yep, we've been celebrating the Staff Appreciation Week, and I love it when staff appreciates when we appreciate them. So there's a lot of appreciation going around. We've got all kinds of different sweet treats that we've been providing to them, and I've had a couple teachers suggest that we just keep this going to the end of the year. So I told them I welcome sign-ups from other staff to manage the following weeks. But it's, it's been great. We've, we've had several staff meetings, working on the Continuous Improvement Plan and also the SR2 funds, and just trying to prioritize what we want to focus on next year, and how we can kind of merge those two together, so we can take advantage of resources and opportunity as we move forward. You know, with, with any place where people are gathering together, there's bound to be some sort of conflict, and so we've noticed a little bit of rising on the playground. And so today, we were fast at work troubleshooting and thinking of some friendship benches and mentor-type programs that we can try to finish the year up, where we have older students involved in mentoring younger students and kind of getting some team sports going and things like that. And then we'll be receiving input from staff and then also students on how that went to wrap up the year, so we can kind of gain some insight from their perspective and see what we can do to better plan for next year, to keep that going and even, and build on that. And that's, that's what we've got going on at Wallingford. All is good.
Hey, thank you. Tyler, how's the big school?
Going very well. So as you might know, this past Monday was our first day back with all of our students all together for four days of instruction in person. And, you know, it's funny, I emailed our staff on Sunday night and said, you know, I'm feeling a little anxious, this feels like the first day of school. And, you know, the first day of school in May is kind of odd, but we were completely prepared for everything, and believe it or not, our biggest issue that we had to deal with was how are we going to lunch? Because the distancing requirements go from three feet while they're masked to six feet while they're unmasked, while they're eating. And, you know, everything went off without a hitch. Everything was great. It was interesting to see how our kids got to see the other half of our kids, and so that was fun. And it's also very interesting, and something a teacher brought up to me today, how this is the first time our seventh graders got to see each other, and got to see each other for the first time, because that's the first time they're in the building. So one half of our seventh-grade students got to see the other set, other half for the first time on May 3rd, this past Monday. So that was really interesting, you know, and another thing of, our students were a little tired on Tuesday, because they're not used to going to school two days in a week. You know, they're, they're used to having a remote day every other day. So Tuesday morning, our students were a little more, you know, a little more tired. So it was, it was interesting, and they're growing pains, and, you know, we'll, we'll move through it. Granted, we only have six weeks left of school, but we'll move through it, and it's, it's going well. We are in the middle of AP testing this, next couple weeks, so that provides a little bit of interesting scheduling issues, but still, we have quite a few students who are taking part in that. When I talk about schedule, scheduling is starting for next year on Monday, this coming week. We pushed it off quite a bit this year to see what the exact need of our students are for next year. So our guidance council is going to be actively scheduling students, starting on Monday, obviously starting with our rising seniors first, and then working our way down to the seventh-grade students. And then probably the biggest tickets for the high school are prom and graduation. We have plans for prom on June 5th coming up. It's going to be as traditional as we can do. It's going to be at Mill River, so it's going to be in the gym, and from 8:00 to 10:30. And we are allowing our juniors and seniors to come to the event. They can bring a guest. So that's exciting, and I know I met with four seniors last week who, you know, were going to advocate, and at the time when I made the meeting, I, there was no guidance on prom whatsoever. So I was really happy that when, before I had this meeting, that the guidance came out that we could do prom, and, you know, it's funny, I had the meeting, and the four seniors said, well, can we do this? Like, yeah, but we can do more. And they're just, they just all looked at me and said, this is amazing, because we can do so much more than what they thought I was going to allow them to do. So that was, that was a fun meeting. And then graduation, of course, our official graduation day is June 9th. Depending on weather, because we're going to do our graduation outside this year, we are looking at any day that week. We will make that call either the 3rd or 4th of June, Thursday, Friday before, and we'll pick whichever night looks the best. And we have plans to allow five family members per graduate at the event. And yeah, so I think, you know, even though this year's been very issue or been very interesting, I think we can finish it off in a very good way to celebrate our seniors and, you know, come to some sort of normalcy. Any questions?
Very exciting you can get to have prom and graduation.
You know, it really is, you know.
Wonderful.
It is, it is. It's really great for our kids. It really gave them something to look forward to. You know, again, that meeting I had with the four seniors, it was four senior girls, and they came in, and they were expecting me to say no to just about everything. And when, you know, they came up with something very restrictive, I'm like, well, that's great, but I think we can, I think we can actually do more than that. And they just, their, their expressions and their, you know, their, their excitement was really, was really great. And I was excited to have that meeting, and we left in a really good place. And it's funny, since I've had that meeting, two of them emailed me consistently and said, well, can we do this now? Can we do this? You know, so, you know, it got them thinking, and it really got them in a good place, and I think we're going to finish the year off strong.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any? Any? Maria? I just want to make sure that, that the board gets to come to graduation, because I would love to wish those seniors well.
Your, that is, that is in the plans, so don't worry. That is in the plans. We have, we have specific seating for you.
Oh, good. With umbrellas and bug spray. Okay, we'll be good. Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. That's very exciting. We will go to central office reports. Dave, do you want to start that off and maybe just run through the written report?
Yeah, you bet. And actually, my written report, I think, stands for itself, so I'd be happy to take any questions on that that the board members may have. Maria, I did want to point out, board attendance at graduation requires a speech, so if anybody wants, you know, guidance on speeches, we'd be happy to help with that. Just kidding.
That's on Adrian.
Yeah, there you go. That's true.
You're kidding, right?
I am kidding, yes. Not for you, as the board chair, you do have some special responsibilities, but for everybody else, they're off the hook.
Sorry to jump in there, but Adrian, yes, you do, as board chair, as Dave said, you, you, you speak.
Do I look really thrilled?
I do want to look at the board.
It's quite an honor. I will work on it. I mean, I'm, it's not my favorite thing to do, but that, that'll be cool. I wish some of my kids were young enough to still be there while I'm doing this. Oh, well.
Understood.
Does anybody have any questions for Dave?
Just one thing I wanted to share quickly with the board. With our leadership group today, we started a conversation, we're going to start as principals and central office administrators, with a more concerted effort to make sure the reports that we bring you for, for our board meetings are linked directly to our board and district goals, because we do want you to be hearing from us on an ongoing basis what some of our different data points are and what some of the anecdotal dynamics are around the goal. Of course, you know, we have scheduled goal updates that you receive from me, but those are, they're somewhat spread apart, so we're going to make sure just as a regular fixture that we are linking directly to those. And we'll probably start that with our June segment of meetings, just to give you some advance notice.
Thank you, Dave. Let's see, Brian?
Good evening, everybody. First, let me apologize. Sorry about delaying the meeting this evening. That's no fun, and, and I'm sorry for that. Glad we got back going, and we have everything working now. My report, there's not a lot that's new in it. I just went a little more in-depth about the recovery work that we're doing, which I think we're going to talk about in a couple of minutes here. So if folks have any questions, maybe, maybe non-recovery related.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, and I'll stick around, and we'll talk way more about recovery when we get there on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Andrew?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone. Not a whole lot to add to my written report. As Brian was saying, you know, the focus as of recently has been around recovery pieces, and just kind of getting that all squared away. Another element has been getting some summer curriculum work squared away, so I'll be putting that out to staff this Friday, so that they can sign up for that, so we can continue some of the curriculum work that got halted from the COVID-19 pandemic, and continue kind of moving forward with our kind of overall curriculum work connected with Professions-Based Learning next year. And then just kind of get everything squared away to onboard whomever is hired to take over my role as I head out this summer. And so that's, that's really all it is for me.
Thank you, Andrew. Coral?
Hi, everyone. My report was pretty straightforward. I mostly just wanted to update the board on a couple of projects that are, that are kind of taking shape. April and May in the special services realm is like project time, so it's kind of cool. Among those projects are the prepping and the planning for summer extended-year services, so we're doing some brainstorming and some planning... are the prepping and the planning for summer extended year services. So we're doing some brainstorming and some planning on how to bring those services together for kids over the summer that are eligible for them. Um, and um, I did update the board just on some like smaller um committee work that's happening. And lastly, I did um just include a little bit of information for you regarding the foundations program, um, which uh, we are sort of actively looking for a new home because um, this is so funny, but so the, the classroom, the modular classroom that we occupy is like 30-ish years old. Some of you have been around, some of you might recall this. Um, so it's been well-loved and it's been a really good home. Um, but it's time for us to start exploring um, some more modernized options. So a lot of work is going into researching and exploring what the options might be for for the continued life of um the foundations program. So um, I know that in the future I will have some updates for you on that, but right now it's just a lot of legwork and research and scoping things out so that I can come back to you and and talk about some options. So not sure if there's any questions, but if there are, I'm happy to answer this.
I had one quick question. Do you think you're gonna be able to, to do your extended year service or whatever the, the extended year services? So you're having trouble? Or?
We're, we're definitely, we're, yeah, so you know, it won't surprise everybody, like people are just so tired this year. So in terms of like thinking about, you know, taking on summer work, um, it's just difficult for personnel to kind of think about that. But um, we are we're gonna make this happen. Um, that's the commitment. We are going to make this happen um somehow. I, I believe that it is going to look different than it has in the past, but the commitment that we make is that it's going to happen somehow. So have some, I have some planning and some strategizing and some thinking to do. But um, yep, it's gonna happen.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks.
I like your attitude. Does anybody else have questions for Coral? Hey, I don't see anybody. Thank you very much, Coral.
Thank you.
Gary?
Good evening, all. Um, in my little world, everything seems to be fairly peaceful and calm at the moment, which is exactly the way we like it. Um, so there really isn't a lot to add to my written report. Would I, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that anyone had.
I think so. How, how did we end up the year for, for fuel oil, or not fuel oil, but all of the different fuels that we used?
Uh, actually, we're, we're looking very well and Stan can, can kick, kick me if I'm saying anything out of uh, out of turn here, but um wood chips, fuel oil and propane are all, from what I can see, projected to be under budget for the rest of the year. Um, all of a sudden, the sun has come out and our solar panels at the high school in Wallingford and Shrewsbury are starting to generate electricity like crazy again. Um, so our electrical um consumption seems to be down and well within budgets. So we're, we're looking pretty good from a resource standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Gary? I'm seeing none. Thank you very much. Carrie, how are, how is all your planning doing? Carrie?
She appears to be trying, Adrian.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
Okay, I apologize for that. I apologize for that uh little, little tech glitch out here. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, the report that I did focused on three different areas that were fairly new from the last time that I reported. One is that we received $72,000 in funding uh from the CRSa Support Fund for elementary schools. And I have to kind of give a shout out to Stan for helping me work with how we can actually spend this. It's a bit of a challenge since our this is federal money and our federal budgets are really set and accounted for with other wages, but we both in, in thinking about what needs are and me thinking about what some of the principals, some of the, the challenges that they've had, that they've come to us with, they relate to outdoor spaces, some indoor spaces, capital improvements. So we're going to be using those funds for capital improvement projects, equipment materials across all the elementary schools. They're long overdue. And again, all of this completely fits in with childcare licensing because we're actually out of compliance on our playgrounds with childcare licensure right now. So we're going to be able to fix a lot of that stuff. And that's really exciting. Uh, second piece on summer, summer planning is just going, going terrific. We are actually almost full, which surprises us. Uh, we've had a uh, an inordinate amount of kids on the older end sign up this year. Normally, we get a lot of the little ones primarily for childcare, but a lot of our older students, particularly in grades five and six, are joining us this year. So we're tweaking program plans, enrichments. Again, a lot of outdoor stuff that's going to be going on. And again, shout out to Tracy Tinsley is doing a wonderful job with that. The last point that I made was just kind of an observation that we're all making overall with the kids. And as, as Tyler had mentioned, you know, kids are getting excited about being able to do the little things that we always took for granted, which is interesting to see. Uh, we're still seeing, you know, some level of anxiety with some kids, some challenges. We still have guidance counselors working closely after school with kids and families. But overall, again, there just is a really positive feel as we're going into summer and as we're finishing the year with after school.
That's wonderful, all around. Thank you. Um, does anyone have any questions for, for Carrie? Okay, seeing no hands. Um, Stan? So you have financial notes and things?
Yep, good evening. Um, yep, I sent out a report uh with a cover sheet for, with financial uh notes summarizing um where we stand as of uh April 30th. Um, there's not much change since the last uh board report in regards to our bottom line. Uh, the unanticipated surplus is still estimated to be around a little over $860,000. Um, and that'll be helpful in being able to use that to reduce taxes in FY '23. Uh, as far as our annual audit, that was finally uh, that was finally uh completed um uh two weeks ago. Uh, I did receive a draft report. Um, um, and I, I had approved that draft report and I'll be waiting for a, you know, the final report that will be made public. Uh, there were no findings in the report, so we did get a, a clean audit this year. Uh, which is a good thing considering all the things we went through regarding COVID and switching to a new accounting software. So uh, kudos to our business staff and also our you know, administrative assistants at all the uh, all the school buildings for uh dealing with a new software program. I think uh, they all did a, a great job in regards to um you know, making it work with a, with a very difficult situation with the conversion to a program that was not very efficient. Uh, as far as that, that's pretty much all I have to say. If you have any questions in regards to the report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ken, I have to, to give your office great kudos. All I've heard from other districts is, is my, our business office is at a standstill because of the new software that the state mandated. And we never heard a peep from you. And that's lovely. Thank you. I, I'm sorry you've had to run dual systems and crazy, crazy stuff, but it's appreciated that we don't have the same disaster that some districts have, have been having. Um, does anybody have any questions for Stan? And Stan, would you like to handle the approval for the warrants that, that Liz would normally do? Or would you like me to do it?
Uh, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I, I do. But does anyone have any questions for Stan? No.
Adrian, can I just comment quickly on Stan's report? I just, I, I don't want us to gloss over um what Stan just shared with you, and that is uh a clean audit with no findings. Um, Stan, our principals, our admin assistants, our business office, our central office staff run a tight ship that is fiscally incredibly well managed and managed very conservatively and cautiously. Um, because our job is to protect those taxpayer dollars and use them for what they're designated for. So I just encourage the board, um, when you have a chance, if you can reach out to Stan and say, hey, great job, buddy. We appreciate it. But um, I'm proud of the work that he does and I know that you are as well. So thanks for letting me say that.
I don't know, Stan, if you saw that, there were, there were multiple people clapping hands. And it, it's well deserved. Thank you. And thank your office, office people. Because they're, they're all doing a, a lot of hard work and we appreciate it. Um, does anybody have any other questions for any of the administrators? Because we will move on to the recovery planning update if that's okay? Who is handling the recovery planning? Is that Brian or?
Yeah, Brian is taking that for this evening, Adrian.
Brian? You are up.
Uh, so I'll give you the quick update. Uh, keeping in mind, it's been two weeks uh since we last spoke about recovery. And at that point in time, a lot of things were just starting to play out uh backing up from uh AOE timeline where it was really, really about uh maybe early April that things were starting to clarify for us. So it's been, it's been a sprint to get to where we are right now. Uh, as you saw from, from some of our reports, it's hiring season, it's assessment season, it's regular grant writing season. So we've got a lot of things going on. Um, and our folks are tired. They've been working very hard through a pandemic. And if you recall from two weeks ago, one of the big pushes that we were trying to make with this work was to engage our staff. So we could have sat, a couple of us around the table and written a plan and been done and sent it off to the agency of education. Uh, patted ourselves on the back, spent a little money and maybe got nothing from it on the student outcome side. But uh, a couple of us at the central office have been working closely with principals to try and help support them as they engage their educators in, in generating ideas. They're the ones that are, that are working with our kids every day and they know what, what our kids need. They know where they are. Uh, they know how things are going. And they also know what's working. So that process takes a little bit more time than just sitting down and writing a plan. But we've been getting some great things back from all of our schools. Two things are becoming apparent. Uh, there is a quick push for summer. And then there's a longer term planning that's gonna happen a little bit down the road. So the quick push for summer. Uh, we are, we are very incredibly lucky to have Carrie and her crew running great summer programs regularly. That's something that not every district has. Uh, I was on a call with the AOE folks this morning and they were doing their weekly question, answer and presentation around recovery work with districts. And they know that it's a huge ask to actually implement a brand new program over the summer. Uh, not a lot of places are gonna be able to pull that off to, to, while school is winding down and everything else is happening, to take your already tired personnel and to create a brand new program and to roll that out in the summer. Uh, the agency is starting to recognize that that is a huge ask and that's a, a gigantic challenge. So again, we're very lucky to have Carrie, her crew and the offerings that they have for our, for our kiddos this uh, this summer. We are working to try and offer something in the summer that comes in August. So that would be after the, after school program wraps up. Uh, so offering something in August so that we can engage our kids even more over the summer. Uh, it's a big ask, but I think our folks are up to the task. So that'll be something you'll be hearing a little bit more about as we uh get into the nitty gritty, figuring out transportation, meals, who's actually gonna be staffing it. Uh, we're getting there. Uh, and it's been a sprint and we're gonna keep sprinting until we have some of that finalized for that August period. Uh, you'll hear more down the road about what we're, what we're planning for next year and the next summer and the year after. I think the, the quote that really resonated this morning when the AOE was giving their presentation was you know, you should really be thinking a lot more about next summer, actually, uh with this funding because of the all the logistical pieces of pulling it off this summer are, are really a challenge. Uh, but again, we're, we're working on it and, and we do plan on offering something this summer in addition to the after school programs offering. Um, the deadline that's coming up, June 1st is gonna be when our plan is due. So we got, we got a lot, a lot going on and a lot to do uh in addition to what we've got going on regularly. And we'll, we'll keep you in the loop. Uh, questions?
Don't see anybody with hands raised, Brian. That was a lot of information for me.
Yeah.
Lot of work, obviously, going on.
Can I add, add one piece? A conversation that we've been having that I think it's worth sharing with, with the community and with parents, uh, families. You know, something that we're noticing, it's, it's really easy to, to address shortcomings that students may have coming out of this pandemic. So it's really easy to look at a, look at a student and say, oh, you're deficient in math. We need to do something about math. We need to help you. You're deficient in reading. Uh, we need to do something very specifically to help you in reading. Those are important things that need to happen. But I think something that has been resonating with the, the whole leadership team lately is that our students, our whole people, they're not broken. They've gone through a heck of a lot through this pandemic and we need to be there for them. Then we'll have math, then we'll have ELA. And something that I wanna, wanna be clear about with, with the public. Uh, if you see us, if you see us planning some activities that don't necessarily seem to address math first, that's why. Because we want to engage our students back in school. Uh, i- if a student has been remote this whole time and they walk in the door and we sit them down to do math, I worry uh how that student's gonna feel. Yeah, the math will come. Uh, but, but we want to be strategic about fostering those relationships so that when we do the math, the math is gonna, gonna work, if that makes sense. The, the academics are absolutely on our radar. Uh, but we know that we need to hit some of those foundational pieces, uh, the social emotional supports first. So but thank you for letting me add that, Adrian.
I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you're, you're thinking so strongly of those, of that component because I s- I see that all the time. As a, as a GAL, the number of kids that are coming through for, for truancy and, and other disconnections with schools in our whole areas is amazing, you know, it's, and not amazing in a good way. Um, there's just, it was hard on kids. It was really hard on kids, no doubt. But thank you. Does anybody else have questions for Brian now? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Look forward to all the next reports. Um, we will go um to committee business now. Personnel, Len?
Yeah, that would be me. Um, just a quick question. David, do you want to start with the AP candidate?
I think that'd be great, Len, if that's okay with you. Is that all right? Excellent. Yeah, so I, I, um, thanks to the board and I, I want to thank, we've got a special guest with us tonight. Kalen Thompson. Some of you may have been going, oh, I see someone in a name there I don't know yet. We want you to get familiar with, with Kalen Thompson. So Kalen is our recommendation um to the board for the assistant principalship at Mill River for a position that begins in July of, of 2021. And what I'm hoping is that Tyler could take a few moments to explain to the board and explain to the community what the search process looked like and how that unfolded. And uh, then I'd love for us to give Kalen an opportunity just to introduce herself and tell the board a little bit about herself. Then obviously, we are, are um interested in you approving her contract this evening. So Tyler, I will turn it over to you if you could talk about process a little bit first.
Sure, thanks, Dave. Uh, so the interview process started for us probably about five to six weeks ago. Uh, we posted the position and we had um about, we actually had 19 applicants. Uh, from there, Brian Hill and I uh went over those applicants and uh decided who we wanted to interview. We took those 19 applicants and went down to uh five individuals. And uh, from there, Brian and I talked to those five individuals for the first round and uh, whittled that down uh to a group for the second round. The second round included, uh, let's see, a paraprofessional, a um classroom teacher, uh, another admin from uh the district, another central office administrator, uh, a parent. And um, trying to think if I, oh, also another admin from Mill River, which was our athletic director. Um, from, and myself, I was included in that group as well. Uh, so from there, uh, we talked to those individuals and had some really great conversations, but uh it was very clear uh from those conversations who are um our candidate was to then move on forward to talk with the um the chair of the personnel committee and to our superintendent. Uh, it was a unanimous decision from that panel to move Kalen forward. to talk, like I said, with, with you, Dave, and also with Len, the chair of the personnel committee. So I think from there, there was a great conversation and we are here where, where we are now. So I'm, I'm happy to introduce Kalen.
I, I don't know. Do you want me to introduce myself now or?
Yeah, Kalen, that'd be great. If you don't mind, give the group.
Yeah. So I was telling the personnel committee, I, you know, I've been a high school and middle school math teacher for the past 10 years. I got my master's in educational leadership and have taken on some leadership roles here. I've also coached varsity basketball. I spent some, you know, three years teaching down in northern New Mexico from Maine originally. And, you know, I think Vermont is a beautiful state. I'm excited about the prospect of, of being at Mill River. And yeah, that's just a little bit about me. I'm excited about the process.
And we're excited. I told the personnel committee, you know, Kalen had the, the bad fortune of her final interview was with two guys and Len and myself who were former assistant principals. So we knew the job, we had some good conversations and Len and I both felt strongly like she would be a very good fit for our community, for Mill River specifically, and definitely bring some, some skills that will really benefit our kids and benefit our, our district on the whole. So Len, I'll turn it back to you. We would really appreciate a, a motion to approve Kalen's contract.
Yeah, I would just like to comment, Kalen, that I appreciate the map in the background there of your picture. She must have taken a lesson from us.
Oh, my copying Dave a little too much, you know, I got a little nervous, but.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So without further ado, I would move that we approve a contract for Kalen Thompson as the assistant principal at Mill River Union High School. Maria, second? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Kalen? Give me a thumbs up or something good like that. And Adrian, can you keep an eye? Cause I don't see everyone. So, and David?
We got, no problem. Yep.
Okay.
I don't see anyone either because I, my, most people are frozen on my connection. So.
Okay. All right. It looked like everybody had their hands up.
Okay, great. Opposed? Abstentions?
I don't see any hands through those.
Okay, Kalen, welcome to Mill River and the district. Welcome.
Welcome, Kalen. Thank you.
Okay. And I have some more contracts and I'll go through these. I'd move to approve a contract for Rachel Patch, 1.0 full-time equivalency, fourth grade teacher at Wallingford Elementary School. Is there a second for that? Thank you, B J. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? We good there? Okay. Move to approve a contract for Colleen Levens, 1.0 full-time equivalency, third and fourth grade teacher at Shrewsbury Mountain School. Do I have a second? Thank you, B J. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? We all good there? If, if you guys see anything, give me a holler. Prove, move to approve a contract for Bradley Wrightout, 1.0 full-time equivalency, school counselor at Mill River High School. Thank you, Maria, for the second. Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Abstain? Okay. Move to approve a contract for Brandy Gillette, 1.0 full-time equivalency, school counselor at the elementary level. Second? Thank you, Maria. Discussion? All those in favor? Say howdy. Thank you. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, thank you. Move to approve a contract for Austin, Austin Colburn, 1.0 full-time equivalency, support staff, custodian. Not sure exactly where at this point, but is there a second? Thank you, Maria. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Last one. Prove a con, move to approve a contract for Jesse Dodge, 1.0 full-time equivalency, support staff, special ed para educator. Also to be determined, but possibly Clarendon at this point. So that's a motion, a second? Thank you, Maria. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? And that is it for the contracts. We still have some postings. Some special educators, special ed para educator, pre-K coordinator, bus drivers, Mill River music teacher, district director of curriculum, that process has begun. And also district L P N. I am going to send out some information for our next personnel committee meeting that'll be on the 16th or 19th. I'm going to ask who can make either of those and whoever we can get the most to attend. That's when our next meeting will be out. I will announce that agenda once I get that buttoned up. There's some things, as you can see, like with tonight's agenda, that gets pretty full this time of year, especially being hiring time and all of that. And so some things keep getting pushed back. And so I, I need to, I feel we need to have an opportunity to just get together and talk about some specific things that we haven't had an opportunity to do. So I will get that information out to committee members and then. Yes, Maria.
Oh, can I just clarify? Did you, did you mean 16th and 19th or did you mean 12th or 19th?
You're absolutely correct. It's the 12th or the 19th. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we had a meeting on the 12th that was canceled. Can't we just replace that meeting with this upcoming?
I'm hoping what I, what I was going to do Andrea is just send out an email to folks and see who can make where we, when we can get the most people so we can meet.
Okay.
Okay, that way I don't want anybody to feel obligated, but as I say, the personnel committee, we, we got to get some stuff done. It's almost June. Okay, Adrian, I believe I am done.
Okay, thank you. Policy, B J.
Yay. So we have, did not have a meeting in between the last school board meeting. On, we do have one scheduled for next Tuesday at 5:30. And just, we are going to be talking about F9 transportation policy. That was kind of an add-on and I'm hoping we're going to finish up on the F1 student conduct and discipline. So just as a note, we might want to try, someone remember to put that as an agenda item for possible first reading for next time. So I'll try and remember that during that part.
Thanks, B J.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'm trying to keep it short and simple.
Okay.
Next.
Yeah. The next on the agenda is negotiations, but I want to, we don't have anything from negotiations because we're not doing anything until next fall. But I did want to say, I'm just going to speak for, for all of us. I hope nobody's offended. Thank you to all our teachers for, for all the hard work that they've been doing all year and, and we appreciate it. Seemed like an appropriate spot since I didn't manage to do it at the beginning of the meeting. Buildings and grounds, I don't know if you have anything to update Doug because you didn't have a meeting either.
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't have a meeting. We'll schedule one for probably the first week or so in, in June. By then Kerry's going to be sort of right in the middle of figuring what we're going to be doing for the summer for the buildings and such. Have more information there. We'll have a more definitive situation and on the fuel supply and the, and the electricals, the, the stuff that we got going. And maybe an idea when the buses might be showing up too. So. And Adrian, I have the, the payroll warrants, if you want me to give that in place of, of our original. I'm not as colorful as she is, but I can get the numbers out.
That would be absolutely fine, Doug. I printed them up just in case nobody else had decided they wanted to do it. But I will happily let you do it when it, when it comes to.
Okay, we got something else before that. So I think.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. We have community engagement and then we'll turn it back over to you, Doug.
Right. Here I am, something else. Um, so community engagement, we also have not met since the last meeting. So I'm just going to say again what we said. Shoot, I had it all queued up. I was so, oh, here it is. Yes. So I have nothing new to add. I just want to review that our next community conversation is May 17th at 6:30. That's a Monday. And if you would like to get a link to that, just write to communityengagement@millriverschools.org and we would love to have you come. And that's a chance to, to share questions that you have or concerns that you have with board members and talk a little less formally than you would do in a board meeting. There's more time for back and forth in that situation, which there isn't in public comments. So we really welcome people to come to that and we do listen and take note. And that I, Sam's not here, so I can't check in on the status of, of putting that on the website, but I know that she's been working hard at that. So, but we'll find out more about that at our next community engagement meeting, which is sooner. It is on the 11th, which I believe is next Tuesday. And that agenda and warning should come back out very soon. So.
Maria?
Yes, please.
Do you know who's supposed to be at the community engagement?
The community conversation?
Conversation. Thank you.
Yeah, the engagement committee meeting is the, is the one we're talking about in business. The conversation is where we invite people to come and have more conversation. So it's less formal. That's a good question. And.
I know I'm one of them. I didn't know who else was.
Right. And that's important because we, I'm sorry, we did say that we were going to share that so people could know if they had certain questions for people. So if you'll bear with me just a moment, I'm doing a really quick search. And
Were we also going to try and come up with some kind of a overarching comment, my main topic? Are we going to talk?
Yes. Um, we're, since we haven't had a meeting yet, we're not going to do that for the next meeting, but we'll, we can set that up in the engagement committee meeting. And we can definitely talk about it in the conversations too.
Maria, I have it up if you want.
You do feel free, go ahead and share it.
Okay, so it looks like Len, who's personnel committee, myself, who's actually the chair of the policy committee, and we have Sam, who is just one of our awesome new people.
Right, from Shrewsbury. So we have Clarendon, Wallingford and Shrewsbury represented. And so if that's helpful to people, and we will put that on the agenda that will be warned so that people will be aware of what's going. Or wait, that's, that one doesn't get an agenda. I'm sorry. Correction. That one, we do announce to Front Porch Forum and on Facebook as possible and I mean via the district Facebook pages and.
Maria, we could announce, we could send it to all the same people that we send the agendas to.
Right. And we, yeah, we can do that too.
Announcement. I think we should because we might get more people.
Good point. Okay. And with that, I conclude the community engagement.
Okay, thank you. Doug, we'll turn it back over to you as the, the finance person for today.
Let me get out of the old, there we go. There was a number, it was probably somewhat active, not as active as I've seen it during the winter time. Mostly come for payroll. It was a few dollars or such said in the, in the general fund stuff. Payroll was for the amount of $552,792.82. That was for the 23rd of April and we had another set of checks on the 30th for $6,002.52.
It was $6,020.
Yep, $6,020. Thank you. But it's, my eyes are kind of frazzled today. Went to general fund. I'm not sure what the K F series means and M F. You know? Maybe David? Nope, he's muted. Forget him.
Trying, no Doug, I don't have that information. Stan?
Those are just Karen and Mike's initials. That's the batches.
Okay. Yeah, we complicated, wasn't it? We see general fund, K F was 282,544.29. The expenses out to the April officials was $765 even. Other general funds, which is some of the miscellaneous things that we do at the school. I'm not sure what the A S P means. It was sort of minimal.
After the food program.
Oh, cool. Three, $3.54 and 14 cents. And the food program came in at $3,072.82 for a grand total, and it is grand, $788,089.8. And I moved that that be approved for the district.
Um, Doug, I have a totally different total.
Well, I did it by the old school, like adding up here and there and taking the Y and moving that stuff. Did you do it on the calculator or something?
No, the total from the business office is 299, 275 with 74 cents. So we'll verify before anybody signs the warrant. Okay.
I figured that was just the general fund, whereas the payroll doesn't, didn't fit into that.
No, it doesn't. Payroll was 558, 813, 34.
Okay.
I'll check it before I sign it. How's that?
Great.
Could we get a motion to, to approve these, these two sets of warrants, please? Maria, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, B J. Any discussion? Normally this would be when we asked Doug if he had any thing to report, but you've already said.
No, didn't find anything that was bad.
Okay, I guess that's good. Is anybody else? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the, the pay orders and payroll warrant? Please raise your hand. Can't see everybody. Is anybody abstaining or, excuse me, is anybody voting no? No abstaining? No. Okay. Thank you very much. Between the two of us, Doug, I think we got it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to transact other legal business unless anybody has anything further on committee business. Okay, I'm going to take this opportunity to read a statement and then I'm going to turn. I know Maria also had something that she wanted to say at some point. On March 1st, I wrote a post to Shrewsbury's Front Porch Forum and copied the same post to my personal Facebook page regarding both the 2021 campaign tone and content, which I found to contain significant exaggerations, misinformation and untruce by official candidates to public office, even if they were only cross posting on Facebook or had references to view other candidates' pages. Since the election was on March 2nd, time was of the essence or I felt so. I had received multiple emails and phone calls questioning supposed actions by both the board and the superintendent that were simply not true. In fact, my post generated many supportive comments from my fellow townspeople. I was pleased that I had effectively countered some of what I believed was misinformation and had connected with my own townspeople regarding the effort to turn the board and the district. On April 7th, the school board decided that my personal comments addressing the campaign by naming and calling out the behavior of five of the official candidates was too harsh and violated the V S B A code of ethics. Specifically that I had not treated members of the public with proper respect. This is the exact wording in the V S B A code of ethics. Quote, "Voice opinions respectfully and treat with respect to other board members, administrators, school staff and members of the public. On this point, I must call into question whether official candidates for public office equates to members of the public." But that is how my personal or my fellow board members interpreted the V S B A. or my fellow board members interpreted the VSBAC language. In closing, I apologize to anyone who feels that I treated them disrespectfully. That was not my intent. In fact, I was trying to counter what I believe could be an organized effort to turn the board and to remove our superintendent in a very pointed and unfair way, since a number of the accusations could only be factually corrected by breaking confidentiality. Again, my intent was simply to use my First Amendment rights to bring transparency and honesty to the election. My hope is that everyone involved in this recent election has learned how damaging words can be. I assure you that I have, and I am truly sorry that people were offended by mine." And that's my comment. Does anybody else have anything other, anything else to mention under other legal business? Maria, did you want to speak? You're muted.
I do. Thank you, Adrian. I just wanted to mention a couple things really briefly. For one, I know that email has been kind of a confusing thing for everyone. And there's, we have a lot of new board members. And what I have learned from dealing, I have, I have, I think, at least five Google email accounts at this point. And when the best way to be able to join a Mill River Google Meet easily is to pay attention to when you get that invitation in your inbox. And when you see that, don't wait until it's just before the meeting, because that will mean that it's like, it's way, it's a lot of emails back by the time the meeting comes in. I am definitely guilty of doing this, as Dave would confirm, because I was asking about an invitation just the other day. Go open that email. And at the top of it, there should be a choice of if you accept the invitation, if you decline it, or if you're a maybe. And answer that according to what your plans are at that time, because that will then automatically go onto your Mill River Google Calendar, which you can access by when you're in your email account. If you go up to that little waffle menu that's up in the upper right that has nine little dots, you click on that and you can get to anything in your Google Accounts. You can get your calendar, you can get to your documents, you can get to your drive, you can get to lots of things up there. But that's a place where if you go there and you go to your calendar, then you can find those meeting links directly. And when you click on them, it will take you directly in on your Mill River Google Mail account. Because if you try to access it from a link in an email, and you have multiple Google Accounts, for me, inevitably, it tries to join it with an account that's not my Mill River one. And so then it becomes difficult to join the meeting. I have to ask permission because it's not, that account wasn't invited. So if you stay within the Mill River system, you'll have an easier time getting to meetings, seeing what's on your calendar. As soon as you get that invitation, it's really important to click yes. I mean, if you can make the meeting to click yes, click no if you know you can't make it. And that's good information for whoever is called to meeting. So that's one thing that's really important. And along with that, to read your email every day, because there's new stuff coming all the time, and it gets buried really quickly. So it's worth just checking in, like setting a time and checking in. This is just sort of basic, but I think it could be, I think it's helpful. And then, let's see if there's one more thing that I have to, um, be careful about replying all because of open meeting law. We can't have a discussion that's the whole board privately within emails. So try to respond directly to people. And the last thing I have to, and the last thing I have to say, we can go back to this if anyone has any more comments, was that also, I know all the principals have pretty much left by their, Dan might be there, I'm not sure. But it was also Principals Appreciation Day on May 1st, I believe. So I'd like to appreciate all of our principals for the hard work that they do, especially in the past year, and keeping track of a lot of moving parts in your schools and taking care of your staff. So thank you. And of course, thank you to our teachers who are at the front line of dealing with our students, who are why we are here, and of interacting with families and helping it be the best experience for them. So thank you all.
Thanks, Maria. And I reiterate, please check your emails daily, because sometimes people ask for opinions or, or responses that actually have, you know, they're important. And if we don't hear from you, then we have to start calling around. And that seems ridiculous. But does anybody else have anything other, for other legal business? Len?
I'm sorry, BJ. Go ahead. Your hand was up before mine.
Okay, I can see him. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was gonna also mention, Anne maintains a calendar you can subscribe to with all the links in it. So that's been a lifesaver for me. And I really want to do a shout out to teachers. Thank you. Genuinely, thank you. This has been a crazy, crazy year. And you deserve all the appreciation you can get this year, because just making it to this point has been amazing. So, thank you.
Thanks, BJ. Len?
Just to repeat what BJ had to say, I, having taught, I can't imagine what it would be, what it would have been like to try to teach this year. I'm glad I retired when I did, because it's, and I, and I mean that honestly, I mean, I, I still know enough teachers and what they went through, and, you know, remote and, and not remote, and partly remote, just amazing amount of work that they had to go through. So they deserve everything. My, and, and I don't know, this is just a question, more than anything. We, we have, we as a board had a complaint registered against us, and then that complaint was withdrawn at the last meeting. Do we know, or I, I guess myself, I would like to know why the complaint was withdrawn? And do, do we get to know that? Or how does that work?
I was just told it was withdrawn, Len.
Okay.
Came in an email.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right.
Okay, that's.
Bruce, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Let me just raise the third one. These are easy, I think. What is, I think I saw this somewhere, but I could have seen it somewhere. What is the policy for public comment as far as timewas?
We don't have a policy that I know of that directly adjusts or addresses that. The agreement amongst the board and, and the chair runs the agenda is two to three minutes, solely because usually our agendas are pretty full. It goes to two minutes when we have lots of people, and when we have a few people, it's usually three minutes. And to be perfectly honest, I very rarely, and I know Tammy didn't actually cut people off if they were finishing up.
I was, I was just asking, I'll tell you.
And I'm just telling you what, what, what has been.
I've watched a lot of board minutes, meetings, and most of them give five minutes if they're fewer than, say, four people. And then they cut it down to three after that. So at least people seem more welcome that you want to hear. They don't last five minutes, a lot of cases.
Yeah. If the board would like to, to suggest that, I'm, I'm perfectly open to that. I mean, if, you know, that, that's fine. It's just, we've been following what, what's been done.
Second question. We've had public comment a lot since I've been here, just three, four meetings. But do we ever address those public comments, or do we just hear them and say, thank you, see you later?
If people have specific questions, and they submit them in writing, then they get answered. Otherwise, it is just commentary.
And they get answered so everybody can see them?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying. You mean, if somebody writes a question, then it's, then they get responded to.
Okay, so if I ask a question, just using me as an example, and I make a complaint or make some sort of whatever, then everybody that's watching this meeting hears it, but only that person gets the answer?
At times, yes. At other times, I would think that it, it's being addressed. Does anybody else have any other? I mean, there are times when we address the comment through some other action, that would happen at a board meeting. But in general, no, only the person that made the quest, or that asked the question gets the response.
Yeah, I'm just asking because some people say they're out of, they're out in the dark, they don't know what's going on. And lastly, what, what Len brought up, I didn't think about it. It would have been interesting to respond to the complaint, because the complaint was made mostly about Matt and me. And I, I don't think it was a valid complaint. But, you know, it's been withdrawn, so I really don't talk about it. That's all.
Okay. I think, you know, probably, Bruce, your, 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 your questions would be a great thing to bring up at Community Engagement, because that is directly involved with whether or not people feel that they've been communicated with directly. And I hope we have, we further this conversation at that point. I mean, I'm perfectly happy to change practice if, if that's what the board wants. Does anybody else have, have anything?
As the Chair of the Community Engagement Committee, who's still yet to submit the agenda to Anne, Bruce, if you'd like to, if you'd like to talk about that, I'm happy to. So, and you're also completely welcome to, to join us for the meeting next week.
Okay. If nobody has anything else that they want to add, I'll move on to agenda building. Dave had talked about that the, the, or administrators would, would be trying to give us their reports based on actual goals that the district has and things that we're working towards. And it, it occurred to us, we were both at a, a training, a chair, you know, board chair and superintendent training, the state of Vermont mandates that. And we had some time to, to, to just talk about how our district was working. And one of the things we were talking about is, this is a fairly new board. I mean, all of the, other than a couple of us, hadn't served on boards before, hadn't served on this board before. And I'm not sure, I'm the last person, I think, from the committee that formed the district that's left on the board. So it feels like we should start another process of goal setting to make sure that we're all on the same page. I think it would make life, life easier and, and to speak to, you know, some of the conversations and, and concerns that have been brought to the board that we're, you know, that we're not all on the same page, and are we just gonna, you know, have a, have a barbecue or whatever. But I think we do have some hard work to do. And we have to, you know, our main function is to concentrate on, on the, the education of, of the children in our district. So I'm hoping that we could go back to what this board had started to do, probably over a year ago, a couple of years ago, that we talked about this, where we have one meeting where we generally do all the business of the board. And we have the reports, and they're, they're more focused, and they're more on, on point on, on how education is doing in the district. And then we have another meeting that can address issues of the district in, in more depth. PD for the, for the board, you know, professional development for the board, all the other things that we don't seem to actually get to when we have two meetings that have a lot of filler stuff. So, next meeting, this is going to be on the agenda. And I'm hoping that we can have a conversation to, to sort of reorganize how we're, how we're going, maybe set up a timeframe for a retreat, for a goal-setting retreat. Because even though the, those, there will be minutes and, and, you know, some of that conversation will happen at the, at the board level, that might be, you know, a three, four hour process, easy. So it's not going to be on a regular board meeting night. So I'm bringing that up for, for discussion at the next meeting. And that's all I have to add to the agenda. If somebody else has something else that they would like to see, and I, I know someone mentioned during this meeting that they wanted to see it on the agenda. And I honestly don't remember. Bruce, you have your hand up?
Yeah, my mic's on. I would like us to consider forming an ad hoc committee to look into why, I mean, the reasons behind students leaving Mill River.
I, I think that's something that we could bring up at that retreat, Bruce. Right? I mean, I, I'd like to sort of get us to a point where we're all on the same page and know what we want to ask and what we're looking for and what we would like to do before we start splintering up into different things. But we'll talk about the plan if, if other people are in a different, have a different mindset, that's absolutely fine. But, but I think that this will be part of the conversation at the next meeting.
And when is the retreat?
We haven't said it yet. That will also be part of the next meeting.
I just don't want this to slip away.
I, I agree. BJ?
Yeah, I was just gonna switch gears. We'll likely have a first reading for a policy.
Okay. You have the number or, or no?
On F1 student conduct and discipline.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I will try and send out something, maybe with some dates for, for a retreat or, or, you know, or at least when we can start this, this, you know, the, another board met, you know, meeting format, if we decide to go in that direction. And I'll try and send out some information before the next meeting, so that we know what we're going to be talking about. I mean, obviously, we can talk about other things, too, but at least to get us started. Anybody else? Otherwise, I will, I don't believe we need an executive session, Dave, do we?
No need for a second session, Adrian.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. No one raised their hands that I can see. So speak up, because my screen is mostly frozen.
Motion, yes.
Okay, now I see hands. Are we, are we in agreement? Everybody raise your hand if you would like to adjourn. It's a little casual, but I, okay. Thank you, and see you next board meeting.